Eleven minutes after ten, and there's only four council members. Six more for a quorum. This is significant progress. It's now thirteen after ten, and we have six council members present. We need four for a quorum. All right, it's ten sixteen. We have eight council members present. Starting a pool on what time we get a quorum. Nine down, one to go. Who's gonna be it? Ms. Goldblatt, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax... Yeah, I know. That's no excuse. So, we're waiting for Mr. Holden, Mr. Wax, or Mrs. Walters. We need only one of you. What would you need one of? All right, even though we are still one short of a quorum, we have a lot of people here this morning, and a lot of people we want to recognize. So, we're going to unofficially call this meeting to order. This is immediate. Thank you, Mr. Bernson, for recognizing me. We got 'em. All right. We actually have a quorum. We will now officially call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, February 25th. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Bernson, Schick, Fuer, Galanter, Dover, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kowsky, Pacheco, Patia, Ridley Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Foro, ten members present in a court, Madam President.
Hallelujah. All right. First item is the...
Approval of the minutes?
Unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Also unanimous vote. We now have a number of presentations this morning. I'm gonna call first upon Mr. Savornich.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. I would like to invite the young ladies of the San Pedro High School Girls' Varsity Cross Country Team to please join me, as well as their coaches and Principal Steve Walters, if he has joined us. Yes, he has. Madam President, members of the council, today I am again proud, pleased, and honored to have with me young ladies from the San Pedro Girls' Varsity Cross Country Team who have won the Los Angeles City Championship in cross country the first time in San Pedro High School's history. As all of you know, many of us have brought teams to these chambers to honor them, most notably football teams, or baseball teams, or basketball teams. But today, these fine young ladies have done the impossible. They have worked very hard, and since 1903, San Pedro has been part of the Los Angeles Unified School District, and it took these many years for these young ladies to bring home a city championship. One of the persons that I would like to highlight is a young lady by the name of Valerie Flores, who broke the Los Angeles City Record in cross country, which had stood for fourteen years. The original record was from 1986. It was a record of 1749. She broke that record with a total of 1713. Quite a remarkable record. Madam President, members of the council, I would like to present to the principal, Steve Walters, a plaque on behalf of the city which says, "To San Pedro High School, 1999 Varsity Girls' Cross Country, Los Angeles City Champions, and Third Straight Year Marine League Champions," presented by all of us, members of the city council. Principal Walters, I present to you the plaque to honor the young ladies and their coaches. And to the coaches and to the young ladies, we have a certificate for each and every one of them. And Steve, if you'd like to say a few words, and then perhaps the coach, that would be appropriate.
It's thrilling and delighted to be here, representing San Pedro High School, the 15th Councilman district, and the support that the city council and our wonderful councilmen gives to the school is outstanding. Rudy, we know you're always there in support of us. But we're here today to recognize the beautiful young ladies behind us that are not only gorgeous, but are the fastest distance runners in the city. And one of them went on to state and to national competition, qualified in the top of the United States. She's now going to go on next year on a scholarship to UCLA, and that's Valerie Flores. But in recognition of Valerie, I'd like to introduce the coaches and let them say a few words. But prior to bringing the coaches on, San Pedro High School just received a million and a half dollars for additional textbooks from the state. As we were going through our textbooks, San Pedro High School never throws away anything. A 1963 version, maybe some of you councilmen remember, good old geometry. It hasn't changed a whole lot since Euclid discovered it, and Pythagoras. This is an autographed copy from 1974 from Rudy Savornich. Folks, come on up.
It's been an honor to work with these young ladies. Since they were in the ninth grade for four years, I have seen them grow from his children to fantastic young ladies. Thank you for all the precious times. And again, wouldn't have been able to achieve this without Coach Thompson.
First of all, thank you very much for our audience today. I came to San Pedro two years ago from Hamilton High School, and I was never lucky enough or fortunate enough to work with a group of young ladies like we have today. They put in the time over the summer, gave them 6:45 in the morning to train. We put in a week in mammoth training, and it really paid off for them. And Coach Carrillo and I worked very hard, but not as hard as these young ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. You know, it's always nice opening up a book that's dated September 14th, 1976, from room number 148, and to be reminded of a subject that one flunked. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council.
Congratulations, ladies. We'll look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you, Mr. Savornich. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation.
Good morning, Madam President. Councilmember, if you're here. I wanted to bring up Councilmember Fuer, because in the past, Councilmember Fuer had recognized Operation Unity, the Young Ambassadors of Harmony. I met Cookie Lamell, because she went out of her way to make sure that the group of students who were taken to Israel were not only from all parts of the city, but were also from my district. So, let's bring up Cookie. I'm gonna have Cookie give you a little bit of background as to what Operation Unity is and what their mission is.
Good morning. My name is Cookie Lamell. I am Executive Director of Operation Unity, and I'm here with our students from Roosevelt High School, Dorsey High School, and Youth Opportunities Unlimited High School. And they are exceptional young women, and men, who had went to Israel to live and work on a kibbutz. And the reason that we go to Israel to work on a kibbutz, because it is a microcosm of a global community. At one point, these students counted fourteen different countries of students their age that they met, worked with, and exchanged, and understood ideas in different cultures. And this is the reason that we go to Israel and to the kibbutz. And it worked very well, and these young ladies and young men are now talking to people, their peers, at churches, schools, and synagogues across Los Angeles, and helping break down racial and cultural barriers. And actually, I'd like to have a couple of them talk about their experiences a little bit. Andrew, did you say your name and school?
My name is Andrew Carter. I come from Youth Opportunities Unlimited. I would like to say good morning to the Madam President and members of the council. I feel as youth, we have a profound choice and experience to make profound impacts in other people's lives and ourselves as well. And I feel that going on this trip made a profound impact on me, because it helped me realize the differences and the needs of spiritual needs and needs of humanity with other cultures and ourselves as well. I learned that things in life may be different, but we're all the same. We're all connected spiritually and physically as well. So, I would like to thank Cookie Lamell and others for giving me the spiritual enlightenment and physical enlightenment of how we're all connected as one. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Cook, and I go to Dorsey High School. I'm not very good at speaking in public. The Operation Unity trip was a wonderful experience, one which I won't ever forget. And we stayed on a kibbutz, and it's kind of like a small community where everybody has to work for the good of the community, to uplift the community. And I think it was good to bring us, students from another community, where people don't really work together as well, to put us in a place where you have to work together. And that's it. Thank you.
I've been asked to say that they stayed there for six weeks. I can take stage direction. I wanted just to add a word to Councilmember Pacheco's presentation. I wanted just to add a word to Councilmember Pacheco's presentation and to that of Cookie Lamell, we have had the opportunity to honor Cookie and this program before here on the City Council floor, and it is a program so well worth recognizing, because how great it is in our city, where we often hear of negative examples of people who attempt to divide us from each other, to see a program like Operation Unity, which as its name suggests, is committed at its core to bringing people from different racial and ethnic backgrounds in our city and around the world, together to recognize what we have in common, so Cookie, for your efforts to help us identify the common ground, and to the students who have learned so much, and who will continue to contribute to creating that sense of unity in our city, I'm sure, congratulations.
I also thought that it was significant and important that this be a joint presentation by both Councilmember Fuer and myself, because of the fact that we are from different parts of the city, we also wanted to basically replicate what the students are learning, that unity and cooperation among the different groups here in the city is important not only to us here locally, but to their experience in Israel, so we'll start by recognizing and giving this joint resolution on behalf of the City Council to all of you, I have one for each one of you, signed by not only myself and Michael Fuer, but John Farrar, our president, this is on behalf of your dedication and work in the kibbutz, and for wishing to expand your own horizons, this for Patricia Nahera. This is for Jordan Chagwar?
Shagwa.
Chag, Shagwar, okay. Sarah Cook? Geneva Carter? Pablo Ramos? Lester Garcia? And Andrew Carter? And for all of them as a group and collective, and for, does she want to say something? Okay, come on.
She's been moved.
Okay, my name is Jordan Shagwa, and I'm from Dorsey High School, and I just wanted to thank everyone, including the teachers that went with us on this trip, and our principals, and our friends, and thank the council members for believing in this program, because it really brought us together, thank you guys all.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues.
Thank you, all of you. Yes, you did, Mr. Holden wants to say something before you all leave.
I just think that you're in a special group for being selected to take this trip to Israel, and to live in a community, the kibbutz, where, as already so appropriately put, the community is required to work together for the good of the community, and the fact that you said, and it's again, in the real world, you come from a community where you don't have that spirit of working together, but since you have learned what working together can do for the good of the community, I'm sure you as, not only leaders today in your respective schools, certainly three from our high school, Dorsey, Geneva Carter, Sarah Cook, Jordan Shagwa, so you will be the people that we'll look to tomorrow, and your generation, to carry on the tradition in that which you've learned in Israel, and we just want to thank you for sharing the information with us, and we're available to help you go on to do greater work.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Chick for a presentation and a half, one and a half presentations. I need to invite all of my friends from Woodlake Elementary School to come up and just kind of form a semicircle around me, and especially if you have a sign, you want to stand right up here in front, all the way around, and as they're joining me, I will start to tell you why, upon reading an article in one of our local newspapers and seeing photographs, I called my office in the valley, and said, "We have to arrange to bring these very special young people down to the City Council for two reasons, one, because they deserve recognition, they've done something really wonderful, and I believe in recognizing especially young people who do wonderful things for others, but also because I wanted to use this as a way to raise the consciousness of the public about the importance, the critical importance of safe driving, and drop-off, and pickup, and parking around our schools, and that I think there's not a council district, or probably a neighborhood in this city, that isn't having serious life-threatening safety problems around their schools, and sometimes, it's the very parents who are dropping off and picking up their children, that are doing it in an unsafe way, and so, Dawn Coombs, where are you, if you'd come right up next to me somehow, Dawn is a Woodlake parent, and when she was a young girl herself, she witnessed her six-year-old, her then-six-year-old sister Tara be killed by a speeding car on a corner by an elementary school, and so, when she saw that there were now problems around her own daughter's school, she came up with a very good idea, and named the program in honor of her sister Tara, Traffic Awareness Really Achieves Tara, and then unsaid, Traffic Safety Really Achieves Safety. This group consists of fifth-grade students who, like their parents, and like us, are concerned about traffic conditions around Woodlake, each student helps with traffic safety by making signs, such as the one you see here, held by this young man, or they get to school early and they leave late, to be there, to observe what's going on, to give greetings at the gate, to assist with maintenance of signs and curb painting, and to just in general, help parents understand, and other drivers, how they have to drive safely around schools, and quite frankly, I'm sorry to tell you, that there was not infrequently, and maybe still is, some really nasty verbal abuse of these young people by some of the parents who are being reprimanded for breaking the rules, and putting our children's and others' lives at stake, so I have recently recommended Woodlake Elementary School for our own Department of Transportation's Safe Routes to School grant, and hopefully, they're going to get some funding so that they can expand the program, and take it on the road, and bring it to other communities, because this is easily copied, yay, Woodlake! I'm going to- Hold the sign up higher, we can't see it on television. I want to ask, I want to ask Michelle Gray and Evan Greenstone to come forward, they're just gonna take a quick minute, Evan has written a poem, and Michelle wrote an essay, and I've asked them to read part of it to you, because I think it very much expresses what this is all about, I'm gonna move the microphone here. Don't get your arms too tired doing that, though. This is Michelle Gray.
I don't want anybody to get hurt, hurt, people are foolish and selfish by dropping their kids off without making sure that they are safe, some parents don't pull up close enough to the curb, some parents park on the opposite side of the street that they are not supposed to, and they let their kids walk across the street all by themselves, and they also do U-turns in the middle of the traffic, which can cause a bad accident. Everybody should do his or her part in keeping everybody safe.
Wonderful, thank you, and, you don't want to do it, and unfortunately, while Evan wrote a fantastic poem, he didn't bring it with him, and so- Come on up here. I was just letting Miss Chick know that I have Evan Greenstone's poem, because someone called me and asked it to be read today, if he wasn't able to be here, so we'll let Evan read it instead, I think it's wonderful.
Be careful while driving, be safe and be smart, have a good finish and have a good start, so don't drive too fast or make a U-turn, you now know that driving's a privilege you earn, always be thoughtful and follow the rules, and that will help make safer schools.
Councilmember Ms. Akowski's magic, thank you, wasn't that great? Saved the day, I am now going to quickly read all of the names of the students here, when I say your name, raise your hand, please, Talina Gillian, Kristen Birchnell, Kenny Chamberlain, Devon Coombs, Brittany Goodchild, Kristen Goodrum, Michelle Gray, Evan Greenstone, Alisa Hill, Jennifer Hill, Alisa Eisenberg, Carrie Colback, Gianna Liddy, Matiana Mitchell, Sana Mohammed, Travis Niemeyer, Anisha Patel, Amber Perkins, Gina Piazza, Chelsea Patio, Alicia Richards, Krista Tadevek, Nalani Tector, Rizwana Virani, Jennifer Weiner, Stefani Wilcox, Melissa Zanit, Sana Kabenavard, and Jonathan Lampart, we got everyone, fantastic, and last but not least, Nancy Firestone, the teacher supervisor of this wonderful group, and if Nancy and Dawn would step forward now to receive the certificate for the school in honor of their Torah program, and deep gratitude for sharing it with us, for doing it, and for leasing the talents and energy of all these wonderful young people, thank you very, very much. And with the student leaders, and I think you are all leaders, but there are a few who were at the very front end of founding and organizing, if you would step forward and accept this, oh, and I just realized, Dawn, if you would come forward, because this is for Dawn, and along with the kids, if you would especially take this for bringing the wonderful idea to us, and while we've taken a little bit more than the normal time, I want to turn the mic over for 30 seconds and let you say something, there you go, and thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm extremely touched that these children have responded in such a positive manner, when I couldn't get adults to step forward, they've shown me unconditional love, and really showed me that they care about what happens in their school, and hopefully, that a child will never have to face what I had to face at my age, and a family will never have to deal with the death of their child due to unnecessary speed around a school again, and I thank you, Councilwoman Laura Chick, for recognizing this, thank you.
You know what, if you all go in the back, in the back, okay, we're gonna come take pictures in a minute, and I get to talk to kids again, if you follow your teacher. Thank you, one would think there couldn't be anything more special than that, but we have a different category of special right now, and where's Madam President? Okay. Councilmember Galanter is sharing with our young poet her unbelievable poet skills. This morning, we are here to recognize one of our own, Sergeant Ron Curry, step this way, please. Mr. Curry? Ron Curry? Whom all of you know. We've been trying for years to make this man blush, let me tell you, it has been hard work, but I think we finally did it, Ron Curry has actually been doing his job for the City of Los Angeles for 30 years, and the last part of that, of course, he's had the toughest job, which is to try to keep the council members on their good behavior, and so, Ron, we thought in recognition of that, and your patience, and your kindness, and generally, because you're a nice guy and we like you, and we've been trying to make you blush for a long time, I have here for you a plaque, presented actually by Mr. Ferraro, who as you know, couldn't be here this morning, I'm very happy to be his stand-in, recognizing your 30 years of outstanding dedication as a police officer, and letting you know that the City Council really appreciates it, and since most of what you do is go around telling us very politely to be quiet, we also have another present for you, which Mrs. Chick wants to present. It's actually called a shush baton. I wish I could claim that I thought of this, who thought of this, was this you, Pat? There we go, great minds work in strange ways, a shush baton, and it says, "Shush, what part of shush don't you understand?" It's not 30 years of shushing, but at any rate, I don't know what we would do without this gentleman and his, and his partners, he keeps us in line, he's an inspiration for me of strength with great civility, a role model for us all, and I know that we will all have to wear earmuffs, because with this, his shushes are going to get very, very loud, but thank you for everything you've done for us in the city, Ron, and it's your turn to talk.
I only have two things to say, thank you, and shhhhh! Stay up there, you're not done yet, seeing as this is my first opportunity, I'm gonna take advantage of it, and I know there's a couple of council members who wish to speak, but I'm, like I said, I'm gonna take advantage of this opportunity, I'm going first, I got the switch up, I, along with Councilmember Pacheco, have only been here a little bit of time, but in that short time, we've gotten to know each other a little bit, enough to have our own little secrets, right? So I'll see you across the street one of these days, but there are a couple of council members who wish to speak, Councilmember Burdson?
I just want to say thank you for the service you've given to this council, the city, and I mean, he really does a great job, and he does it the right way, the alternative, you know, is the street, so. But Ron, I think the relationship that you have, certainly you and I have, and I think you probably have with most of the council members, is not one of just somebody who is the police officer on guard duty here, but also is a friend, and try to keep order in here, and you've done a good job there, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Getting into this, Council, Chair recognizes Councilmember Walters.
Thank you very much, I want to add my commendations to Ron for his 30 years of service to the city, but also to say that he's really, truly a gentleman, he is such a gentleman, he has a quiet way about him, and it's almost like a gentility, that I certainly appreciate, and even when he's called upon to shush, either us or the audience, he does so with a high degree of respect and gentility, he's a gentle soul, and I've appreciated getting to know him during the time that I've been here, I hope that this doesn't mean he's going anyplace, okay, all right, very good, but I just care about him a great deal, and thank you very much for serving the people of the city in such a fine way for so long.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, I think it's with a high degree of pride that we look to Ron Curry as a police officer who has distinguished himself, and in so- doing makes us proud when we think about Los Angeles police officers. Against the backdrop of what we face in this city now, I would direct your attention to the stellar commitment and service of one Ron Curry.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Hernandez.
Ron, I wanted to also stand up with my colleagues to recognize... Ever since I've been in the council, and I've been here a little longer than Councilmember Padilla, you've been basically the individual probably most responsible for us feeling secure here. Before we had the metal detectors and these door keys and all these other things, I also want you to know that when we go out in the community and you're there, it creates very much a sense of security. And I know that the public tends to also feel secure when it's here, listening to us. I do want you to know that you're probably one of the most imitated people in this building. But everybody, when they do their imitation of Ron Curry, it's very simple. They always just go, "Shhh." But again, I just wanted to stand up and thank you for being able to create that atmosphere in a way that provides a lot of dignity to all of us.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think all the council members have said what's necessary, and all I would like to suggest is that we are talking an awful lot about police training these days, and I don't know that we need training, we need the models. And the models are standing, the model is standing right here. I'm not sure that they teach "shhh" at the academy, but everything else that you embody and present as a police officer today is what should be trained at the academy and taught, because that's what we want. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
You see what I mean, Ron? Your time is up. Well, I told you to bust them when they got a line. You told me point, and I pointed, but you never followed through. You know, I've seen Ron carry out his duties here, and certainly with "shhh," that's no more force than necessary. But you know, when he would say to some of the council members, "Shhh," I looked into his eyes, and he meant it. And if you did "shhh," I knew it was coming. You know what I mean? But only he and I knew that. I said, "Take him out, Ron," but he wouldn't do it. But I've seen in the audience where some of the speakers at Public Committee would get out of control, and with the ease in which he handled a matter that could have really gotten out of control, the snowball, it's usually applauded for that. I mean, I don't think that anybody of the 14 members here, I mean, excluding myself, would have handled it so well. You know, they, you know how they do sometime, even to each other. And I try to tell them, "Shhh," but they don't listen to me. They listen to you. And I just want you to know that at the time we worked together here, I've been very pleased and very well protected, you know? And that's what's important, too. The council members got to know that even before they put that detector in there, you were watching our backs, and we want to thank you for it.
We're not done. Councilmember Savornic.
There we go again. You know, the nice thing about having a sergeant-at-arms as the council chamber is making sure that the sergeant-at-arms is bigger than you, and this is good. To one of the good guys, you know, one of the things to which is always very... It kind of sets the tone and puts you in your place when you walk in as a new council member, to be able to take your place around the horseshoe, and you go ahead and you stand back from your microphone for the first time after going through maybe a tough primary and a tough general election, and you finally arrive at City Hall to have this big police officer look at you and go, "Shhh." Puts everything in perspective.
Reminds you of geometry class.
Yeah. But then, of course, it's a lot more merciful than having to go through two years of geometry. But, Ron, congratulations. You're truly one of the good guys, and as the other members have articulated, it is just a shame that the example that you set could not have been seen by some of those to which we now have to grapple with their conduct. I think if during the course of their brief tenure, if they would have ran across you and saw how you carry out your duties, we wouldn't be in the pickle that we're in, and we're so honored that you're with us. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you. Is that everything? Councilmember Fier.
Hi. Ron, just very quickly, I think the moment that typifies for me the approach you take to your job was when in... We went to Comer Padilla's district to do a budget committee meeting not long ago, and Natalie from my staff was just mentioning to me again how she's like one of the last people to leave. It's very dark, there's almost nobody else around, and she's walking out, kind of looking over her shoulder, and over her shoulder was you, without any request, just quietly walking her to her car to be sure that she was safe and secure, given how much work she put into the day. That's what you do, and you make all of us feel that way. It's sort of like putting your arms around all of us and saying that we're in your care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Now you may speak.
I wish I could take all the credit for that, but I have two partners that look over my shoulder, too. They both keep me safe, and the rest of you, so Herman Landry and Eddie Banks, so they deserve some of the credit.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Thank you.
But you've been doing it longer than they have. Their time is coming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Fier for a presentation.
I'd like to ask Robert Ringler to come forward, please. All of us have constituents of whom we are especially proud because of their enormous commitment to their friends and neighbors, and Robert Ringler is one such person. Native of Los Angeles, he has served all of us for more than 30 years. He was a scientist who did research at UCLA at the Brain Research Institute and Neuropsychiatric Institute. For 20 years, he served as a dean in Student Affairs. He started the UCLA Sierra Club, was its first president, started the track club. He was elected president of the residents of Beverly Glen and served as the president from 1979 through 1981, and then from 1996 to 1998, and he's been re-elected again. This is indicative, I think, of somebody who everybody in the community trusts as a leader. In 1998, he was elected to serve as the first chairperson of the Holby Park Advisory Board and as a member of the 1999 Adopt Fire Station 71 Executive Committee. He was appointed in 1994 to the West LA Community Police Advisory Board. He currently serves there as a member of the Executive Board and chairman of the Traffic Committee. Robert has been focused on bringing innovative approaches to traffic calming, an issue that all of us care a great deal about as we're trying to protect the safety of our residents, and really has been just an extraordinary community leader. As I stand here, you see this young man next to me who has been engaged as a leader in about every community activity you can think of. It's clear why we've chosen to honor him today. Congratulations for some really spectacular achievement that often goes unrecognized. Today will be the exception to that, as we all honor you. Congratulations.
Mr. Wax, is this the one you had your button pressed for? I'm sorry.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Madam President and members of the council, as you well appreciate, this is the annual observance of African-American History Month, and the presentation that I'm about to make you will find most fitting as it relates to local history and indeed national history. We are honored, indeed blessed, to have with us today gentlemen whose stories are well documented in the history of this country, having served the United States during the Second World War. Many of you may recall and or appreciate that at that time, the armed forces followed the norms and mores of the larger society and separated black servicemen from their white counterparts. One of the consequences of being African-American in the segregated military of the time was assignment to Port Chicago Naval Magazine in Northern California. Let me give you just a brief snapshot of life at Port Chicago. In July 1944, there were 1,400 black enlisted men, 71 white officers, 106 Marine Guard, and approximately 230 civilian employees stationed at Port Chicago. The work performed at Port Chicago was the loading of ammunition and explosives on ships for transport. African-American naval personnel were assigned to the dangerous work of loading the ammunition and explosives onto the ships. They worked around the clock, performing this backbreaking work. It is an understatement to describe this work as extremely dangerous. The men loading the ammunition never received any training. The equipment was poor and badly maintained, and the ammunition loaders were pressured to work quickly by officers who made bets on the quantity their unit would produce and load in their eight-hour shifts. The tragedy of Port Chicago began to unfold on July 17, 1944. A blast comparable to the explosion of a five-kilotron bomb occurred. The ships being loaded, the pier, the structures in close proximity were totally destroyed. 320 people lost their lives, and 390 additional men were injured. The event qualifies as the largest stateside military disaster of World War II, and it accounts for 15% of all African-American casualties of that war. This tragic story does not end with the cleanup of Port Chicago, the healing of the wounded, and the memorializing of the dead. Following the tragedy came the travesty. The Naval Court of Inquiry convened to investigate the explosion found that it was caused by the incompetence of African-American sailors. The shocked, grieving seamen were ordered back to work and denied leave. The few white servicemen assigned to Port Chicago were given 30 days' leave. Less than one month after the blast, the African-American seamen were forced to, forced back to work at the nearby Mare Island Base. There were no charges or changes in procedures. The equipment was as poor as that found at Port Chicago, and again, no training had been provided, the ammunition loaders. So facing similar conditions, 258 African-American sailors refused to load ammunition unless safety measures were implemented. The Navy's response was swift and equally unconscionable. 208 were given summary court marshals and dishonorably discharged. 50 were accused of mutiny and general court marshals were given. Freddie Meeks was one of the 50. He stands here with us today. They were all found guilty and sentenced to between eight to 15 years of hard labor. Soon after the war, however, their sentences were commuted, and they were dishonorably discharged. The fight to tell the story of Port Chicago and to have the convictions overturned has been long and hard. Some of us are reminded of the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who in the struggle for equal justice and treatment has often said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." And so it is. More than a century later, in December of last... More than a half-century later, in December of last year, Freddie Meeks received the presidential pardon that he sought for so long. And equally important, the account of Port Chicago, the story of courage and distinguished service by African-American sailors stationed there, is now being woven into the historical narrative of American history and the contributions and bravery of African-Americans toward that great history. Madam President, members of the council and to the city at large, it is with a high degree of pride and humility that I take this opportunity to present this commendation to one who has distinguished himself by humility and courage and a fundamental degree of determination to see that right is done, Mr. Freddie Meeks. to acknowledge and honor, salute the presence and contribution of Bishop, now Bishop Benny Arbenbo, who pastors in our city and who is deserving of the highest commendation for his work in the United States Navy during World War II and to the religious community in the Southern California community for over 50 years. Bishop Arbenbo?
Thank you, and Madam President of this very fine city council. I look forward, I long for 55 years to be able to stand and tell you what I know about this Port Chicago. And strange things happen in our lives. I didn't know that I would be standing here beside a citizen here. I'm a citizen here now for 50 years, and while we were in the military service, I was just a licensed minister. And when we were... It was volunteers to go to this area, Port Chicago. And I was scheduled to go. And just at the time we were to go, I received, I don't know how you feel religiously, but there is a God. God dealt with me, told me not to go, scheduled to go. If I had gone, I would have been now with those young men in my company. I would have been with them long gone, July 17, 1944. And to Brother Meeks, he was already scheduled to go. And to Brother Meeks, he was already scheduled to go. And I see how God saved our lives, and here we are here 56 years later. And not just thanking God, but thanking this fine city council, and what you're doing here today. This gives us new life. Gives us new life. And I can understand the tears. God have helped me, I don't cry about it anymore, but I used to. Until this year, when Wrigley Thomas sent his deputy out, when we were having African-American history, and I told what I had longed to tell for 56 years, and for some reason, it lifted from me. I don't have any tears coming down my cheeks, but the men, I shook everyone. I was, I was just a licensed minister. I was no bishop in that day. I was a licensed minister. The same thing Brother Meeks says now. I shook the hands of every one of those men. They respected me because I was the minister. And in my company, everyone who left and died in that blast, I shook every one of their hands. And there were times that that would just come across my mind. I could be having dinner, I could be having a hamburger, and this would just come across my mind. Until Wrigley Thomas sent a representative out during Black History Week. The tears are gone, but the memory lingers on. I want to thank you today. Minister Meeks would like to thank you today. This means much.
Don't leave yet, gentlemen. We have several ladies, we have a couple of council members who want to say something as well. Mr. Holden is first.
Mr. Meeks and Bishop Arbenbo, the nation, if not the world, owes you a debt of gratitude for withstanding the pain. And as you spoke today, I didn't hear any resonance of a bit of bone in your body. It was one of understanding and forgiveness, if any at all. But you know, it's just wonderful that we've been able to revisit this history. We left a lot of it out. But the part that you've expressed is as painful as if you heard it from the 1492 up into the year 2000. For those of us who lived portion of it, understands, the pain never leaves. Unfortunately, the perpetrator and the victim come together from time to time, but not enough to understand that we're all human beings. We're all God's citizens. Sometimes they don't like to hear you use the word "God," or the creator, the planet, the universe. But they didn't create them themselves, and when they leave, they leave like everyone that's struggling for the last breath, because they don't want to go. But going they will, suffer they will as you have. And I don't see much difference when you look south in our own city, and you see the youngsters who are filling up the prisons, because in a way, they have the mindset that's been transmitted, where there's no hope, they talk about where there's no peace, no justice, then there's no peace. There's no hope. And I don't see any program, nor will I live to ever see, where they're going to have a reach-out and heal the wounds before the forty acres in the Mughal's Promised. That's what it is. It's always been that way. Their people think of the world as their world, and you just should be happy to live in it. Well, I'm here to tell you that it belongs to everybody, Mr. Meeks, Bishop Arbenbo, it should have belonged to all those who were forced to die and forced to work in an unsafe environment, and they didn't want to know why people get angry. It's all been said.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to begin by, pardon me, by thanking Mark for bringing Mr. Meeks and Bishop Arbenbo before us today, because sometimes we have to, we play a variety of roles as city council members, and sometimes that role is to help teach. I'm very familiar with the story. I've heard it a number of times. I didn't know Mr. Wrigley Thomas was going to bring you gentlemen before us today. It's a real privilege to have you here. Most of us can't fully relate to having endured this kind of injustice personally for so many years. I don't know, you know, Mr. Holden referred to the debt that you are owed. It can never be repaid, we know that. But before us today, you're helping to teach another generation about the horrors of racism, about what happens when people dehumanize one another, and the consequences of that. I'm thinking in particular of our daughter who's in first grade, and whose teacher this month is really focusing on Black History Month, and the kind of lessons that she is assimilating now, learning about people like Rosa Parks or Marion Anderson. And Mr. Meeks, I think that you stand proudly in their company, as someone whose dignity and whose response to the humiliation that people attempted to have you suffer has been such a solid staying power, and such commitment to holding fast to principles that we can only speak about. It's very, it's a real source of pride to have you here, and I want to again thank Mr. Wrigley Thomas and both you gentlemen for the example that you are to us and to our kids and to generations that need to learn about what our society has done, so we won't do it again.
Having been a U.S. history major in high school and at UCLA, I know how important it is to study our history, our full history, as you are helping us to do today, to know not only who we are, but how far we've come, and how much farther we still need to go. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you very much, Madam President. You know, speaking of history, you won't find the Port Chicago incident, unfortunately, in history text. Some years ago, I had the job of reading textbooks for the treatment of minorities and women before they were adopted by the state of California. I never came across a textbook that said anything about the incident at Port Chicago. I never came across a textbook that said anything about the gross discrimination against blacks in the military during those years when they were fighting for the safety of this country. I never saw anything in the military about the incarceration, in the history books about the incarceration of the Japanese, right here, Japanese-Americans, right here in our own state. Unfortunately, history texts are written to sell, as we were told when I raised some of these questions, they said they have to sell textbooks in Texas, and they have to sell textbooks in Mississippi, so they're written to a broad audience. And that said to me that there were forces that were keeping the stories of history from being told all over the United States. And that continues the travesty of ignoring the kinds of events that happened at Port Chicago. And council members, I don't know whether we all understand the depth of the discrimination against these men. One, they were tried unjustly, found guilty unjustly, sentenced to incarceration, and then after the war was over, their sentences were listed, they were released, but on dishonorable discharges. Do you know that there are companies all over this nation that wouldn't hire a person for any kind of job if they have a dishonorable discharge from the service? Do you know what the impact of that is on people's lives as they try to make a living? There are schools that wouldn't admit people with a dishonorable discharge. Do you know what that means in terms of someone young trying to prepare themselves for a better future? The dishonorable discharge echoes through the years. It's a mark, like a mark of Cain on a person, that never leaves them their whole life long. And I want to commend Mr. Meeks for his courage in pursuing this through all the presidencies that have occurred since 1944, and finally found favor with President Clinton to absolve him of this gross, gross indignity, travesty, horror, all the terrible adjectives that one can speak of. This man has suffered. And I am pleased to be among those that are here to honor you today.
Madam President, members of the council, we thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Good. Madam President and members of the city council, we have with us in the chambers today, and we're honored to have with us individuals who've seen many moons, many sunrises, and many moonsets. In fact, 100 of them, years of those rise and sets. And that's Miss Alice Breckwith, which age truly is just a number, and that's where we're going to put it with her. This remarkable woman turned 100 years yesterday. And has devoted her life to teaching children how to read by using phonics. In fact, she has such tremendous energy and enthusiasm that she is still teaching kids at Hoover Street School today. Miss Breckwith resides at Sunset Hall in my district, where she is very active in the community. Miss Breckwith has written letters to Governor Gray Davis and to the Board of Education, offering good advice for improving reading in our schools, and anybody should know, she knows. Am I right? All right. We are honored to have here, have her here today, as an example of the many ways we can continue to give back to the community throughout our lives. And happy birthday, my dear friend, Miss Breckwith, who lives in my district. We also have the director here, Phil Way, Director of Sunset Hall. It's a retirement residence, and I got to tell you, it's an example of what a retirement residence should be like elsewhere, not just there at the hall, because they're so well treated, so well maintained, and I'm very proud that it's in my district. And you know, I'm always there, willing to help and be available. And I would just want to thank you publicly for your vote last time. It really made a difference for me.
And thank you to the rest of the council for giving us some recognition for this truly remarkable lady. I don't know if you truly understand that what's so obvious to me, which is that we're not just celebrating her first 100 years here, we are also celebrating the fact that she is still a vital and involved person in other people's lives, as a teacher, and a leader, and a role model at 100. And that in itself is truly remarkable. When Alice came to live at Sunset Hall two years ago, one of the reasons she came is because she said, "There's not enough to do where I am." And she still complains about that sometimes. And what she means by that is she wants opportunities to teach. She wants to share her gift and her passion for teaching literacy. And that just thrills me, and I want to just say, congratulations to you, Alice. You want to say something?
They need one book that costs $5. Anyone can teach anybody that, as long as you can speak English, get a book.
And we have some of the other residents from Sunset Hall give them a big hand as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, and congratulations, and happy birthday to Mrs. Breckwith. That completes the presentations for this morning, so we're now going to begin our agenda. Mr. Clerk, the first item, please.
Item number 10, a request to be referred to Budget and Finance Committee.
Without objection, so ordered.
Item number 16, a request that matter be continued till February 29.
All right, we'll do that as well.
Item number seven is confirmation of city official, the appointment of Dr. Lisa Murphy to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Dr. Murphy, are you still here? Come on up. I don't think anybody needs to say anything, but do you want to come up to the table, just in case anyone has a question? All right. I hear a motion of approval. You won't have to say anything at all. Mr. Fuhr moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Congratulations, you've been approved. Thank you for being here. I hope you make it to your next appointment.
Thank you.
Fourth with on that, please. All right, the next item.
Items number one through three on the regular agenda are items for which public hearing, or, excuse me, items noticed for public hearing.
We do not seem to have any speakers on this, but we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to be heard on items one through three? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and the items are before us. Any council members wish to be heard? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number four through six on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, we don't have any cards on those anyway. Items four through six, council members, any specials, any comments? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on five, without objection.
On item five, could we, just for purposes of an amendment, I think it should come back through CED? Isn't that what the committee report talked about happening?
Item five, hold on.
But it wasn't in action. So it wasn't heard by the CED committee, it is a federal grant application, and I didn't want to inhibit that from happening, but we thought that when they were ready to...
I believe it comes back automatically.
Right.
We'll assume, unless somebody objects, that that's what's incorporated here.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was one of the instructions.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It will be done. All right, next item, or items.
Items number eight through 32 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Number 10 and 16 have already been acted on. Number 10 and 16 have already been acted on.
Council members, are there any specials on items, what was it, eight through 32? 32 special, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Savornich calls item 14 special. Anybody else? All right, there being no public hearing, no cards from the public, we will deem the public hearings on those items closed. And are there any council members wishing to speak on any, except the ones called special? So we will open the roll on eight through 32 with the exception of 14 and 32. So it's eight through 31 with the exception of 14. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Love it, such efficiency. Okay, next item.
Items number 33 and 34 are from the continuation agenda. They are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right.
We had been continuing item 33 for recreations and parks. Are the city attorney staff on it?
Do we have, are they here?
If they're not here, I'll just move, we continue it till Tuesday. But that's what we've been waiting, the one on the Quimby funds?
Yeah.
Receive and file?
Say that again, you want to receive, you want a note and file that?
No, I want the city attorney and the department here on this report.
All right, well, is either of them here?
They can come down.
Why don't you call them, we'll hold that on the desk. Item 34, Ms. Goldberg is not here today, and we had a problem with the vote count. When do we next have 15 members in council?
March 8 is a Wednesday. It's approximately...
Unless I hear a strenuous objection, I'm going to recommend that we continue that item until then, so we don't have to have it keep coming up and disappearing again. All right.
Item number 34.
Item number 34, we'll continue then.
Madam President, may I ask, we might have the general managers here. We might separate that. I understand that Ms. Goldberg's issue is with item number one, which is the establishment of an advisory group. We are holding up appointments to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment while not...
They are us holding it up.
Well, if we continue it, it will be held up. There are appointing authorities here that are being presented.
Well, maybe then we ought to, at least since it was Ms. Goldberg who raised the item, maybe we ought to at least hold it until she's able to be here, and I didn't want us to get in. Tuesday she'll be here, then let's continue it until Tuesday.
Pointing a word on this issue, it wasn't Ms. Goldberg, I think it was Mr. Pacheco who didn't vote with the rest of us. The vote was 9-2-1.
That's correct, but I remember that.
Who was that again?
Well, we can vote on the whole thing.
Right, that's what I thought.
There being 13 members here, why don't we try doing that?
That's what I thought.
All right, now I have two people who want to speak before we do that.
Okay.
Ms. Chick and Mr. Pacheco both want to speak.
Oh, well, I think Mr. Pacheco...
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to vote. There was all, wait, there are 13 of us here today. There were only 10 of us here the other day. We may not need to go through all this other stuff. Why don't we take a vote and see what happens?
Okay, okay, we're voting.
Okay, we are voting now on item 34. Open the roll, close the roll, hold your breath, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
All right, that is approved.
Wait, I had Holden, I was pushing, no, you...
I counted you as a no, you're counted as a no. Congratulations. Consistency reigns.
Madam President, I want...
All right, that is now approved. Forthwith, please. Item, item forthwith on 27, while we're calling the next item. Thank you, Mr. Deedon. Got that forthwith on 27? Okay, next item.
Items number 35 and 36 on the continuation agenda are public hearing have not been held items. The motion is required on 35.
All right, now, is there anybody in the chamber who wishes to be heard on 35 or 36? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Mr. Hernandez, are you on 35?
Yeah, Madam Chair, on item 35.
A, you can hear.
Madam Chair, on item 35, I had asked that it be continued so that we could do some further review on some of the previous expenditures where they're transferring to funds. And now I'd like to rise and move 35 A and B.
Okay. 35 A and B, anybody else want to be heard? Open the roll on 35 A and B. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Unanimous vote, that is approved. You wish to take note of the fact that Mr. Ferraro has joined us?
No, Madam President, I think it would be appropriate that we take note that Mr. Ferraro has joined us this morning.
I think it would indeed, welcome back. Would you like your chair? I've been keeping it warm for you.
Don't give him the chair.
Wait a second, it's his. All right, moving right along here. Item 36, did we vote on 36?
You voted on 36 the last vote.
Okay.
I had a question on 36.
No, I don't think we did. I think we only voted on 35. 36, all right, Mr. Hernandez.
On 36, and I need the city attorney, members of the council, I'd like you to kind of tune in on this. Basically, what we have is a development agreement that basically allows for a project to move forward, and it's currently occupied by a temporary occupancy permit. We had set conditions before they would have their certificate of occupancy, and they were in the form of Q conditions. Now, one of those conditions has not been fulfilled. Now, the planner, who basically has been overseeing this project, is absent today, so I'm asking for a two-day continuance. Now, one of the things that bothersome to me is the city attorney saying we can't do that, that we, by state law, because of the track map, have to issue this certificate. However, the planning department is telling me, city attorney, that by state law, we can continue it for two days.
Could you please...
What, the reason I think it's important that all of my colleagues listen to this discussion is if we're putting conditions on development, and the developers are agreeing to it, and then when they do their development, aren't fulfilling those conditions, what we need to know is that the city attorney needs to advise us in advance whether we have the authority to require these conditions to be put in place. And they need to basically tell us how to do it right. It's frustrating to me that we go through this entire process, and what we're dealing with here is the home people that agreed to have a day labor site, participated in the development of that day labor site, and now is choosing not to. And it was one of the conditions that we agreed to the development on. And so I'm surprised when the city attorney now says, and they're telling us, that by state law, we don't have the right to enforce those conditions, that they will get the conditional, or the occupancy certification automatically. So that's what's confusing to me. But the planning department told me I could continue this for two days, and I'm watching the city attorney nodding, saying I can't.
I have spoken to one of the city attorneys who was advising your office on this, and it's my understanding that it has already been deemed approved by operation of law. Now, if you want to hold this on the table, I will have Ms. Burge come down and explain it or answer the questions for you.
I think that would be helpful. But we do have two more council members who want to be here.
Ruth, excuse me, because I'm going to, maybe I can cast a little...
Well, Cindy's up ahead of you and then you.
Oh, okay, fine, let's Cindy.
Ms. Zakowski.
This looks, it says here we're supposed to approve a subdivision improvement agreement and a contract and accept an adopted bond. And if those are both pursuant to a parcel map and conditions put forward in a parcel map to allow the parcel map to record, and there's question as to whether or not there's compliance with the condition, I believe that we are within our rights to hold it. And although some parts of it may have been enacted by law, I think that the affirmative action of the council today to do something is dependent on a sense that we have had an obligation or requirement that the conditions have been fulfilled. So I would just rise to concur with Mr. Hernandez, that I think we can continue this until it's resolved, and that there's legitimacy in that, if this is the acceptance of a parcel map agreement and contract.
Okay, Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I think Ms. Zakowski has covered it, but is this, we do have time, we don't have to act today, do we?
No, I believe that the council either has to act today or has already, this has already been deemed approved.
Wait a second, wait, 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 stop right there.
Okay.
You say if we don't act today, it's going to be deemed to be approved?
It...
Answer that question.
In my conversation, I'm about to, Mr. Burnson.
Okay.
In my conversation with Ms. Burge, who is on her way down, when I spoke to her earlier, she indicated that the conditions had already happened, had occurred, and that this item was deemed approved by operation of law, that the way the track map works, that parcel map works, is that the council has to act on the day it's received. They can continue it one day to the next meeting, that's today.
I move that this, I move that this be voted down. We can reconsider it the next meeting if they agree to do what they should be doing. So my motion is that we not approve this. I would so move.
If you want to wait, Ms. Burge is on her way down, she may be able to clarify this.
Why don't we just hold it on the desk until she gets here?
I want my motion up.
All right, your motion is here.
And I'll check in as well.
Okay, we now have a motion, and we're going to hold this item with the motion until Ms. Burge gets here. And in the meantime, forthwith on 35, please. And let's go to our next item. And the lesson of this, by the way, guys, is don't approve development agreements. Development agreements get us in trouble.
Item number 14.
Item number 14, Mr. Savornich, who had called it special, says his problem is taken care of and recommended approval. If there is no objection, open the roll on 14, tabulate, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Forthwith, Mike, what are you, who's saying, on 14? Forthwith on 14. All right, next item.
Item number 32, called special by Councilmember Padilla.
All right, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, I did push my button, you're always reminding us.
I saw that.
I just wanted to ask for your support for this motion. A couple of weeks ago, there was another somewhat related item before us, and I made a mention of examples where in our city, because of the compliance we have to meet with the Americans with Disabilities Act, we're instituting curb cuts. But there's places in the city where you'll have curb cuts at the corners and no sidewalk in between, or sidewalk in such disrepair, that if we look at, really, the spirit and intent of the Americans with Disabilities Act, it makes no sense. It makes no sense to have curb cuts if you can't get from one corner to the other. So this motion really asks the department to come to the council through committee and tell us how they can address this issue. We've been meeting our ADA commitments and compliance with tobacco settlement funds. And I know they've been in the news lately in terms of how we're going to continue to spend them this year and in future fiscal years. So whether or not we have to ask for additional funds to create these connections of the cuts, I think is a separate argument, because at minimum, we can and should be spending our money smarter. So that's the basic gist of this motion, and I do ask for your support.
Thank you. There being no other speakers, open the roll on item 32, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
On the desk are items 33 and 36. 37 through 39 are closed session items. There is also a special agenda item, number one.
Let's take the special agenda item while we wait and see if the other things are going to get resolved here. So we're going to recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting. You need to call, call the roll on the special meeting.
Burnson, check, Fier, Galandra, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Zakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Walters, Ferraro, 13 members present and accorred, Madam President.
All right, let us begin and take item one on the special meeting.
Item number one is the item for which a public hearing has not been held.
Is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to be heard on item one on the special meeting concerning Mandeville Canyon? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and the item is now before us. I guess we need some kind of a staff report. Somebody know what this is? Ms. Zakowski is going to tell us.
This is a Prop K matter. It is a part of the bonding requirement where we had to come up with matching funds. The county is supplying matching funds. This is a request that the city accept the matching funds so that the bond can go forward.
Oh, well, we always like accepting other people's money, so. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Unanimous approval, we'll look forward to the check, and we will now send that forthwith, and then we will close the special meeting and resume the regular meeting, which brings us, I believe, to item 33.
Item number 33.
Now, which I can't even find on my agenda here, here we are. Okay, item 33. Somebody called this special, is that how we got it here? Mr. Hernandez, you called, Mr. Hernandez? Did you call item 33 special? You had questions concerning this.
Yeah.
All right, could you push the button, please? Thank you.
Members of the council, this question has come before us time and time again, and when Mr. Fier introduced the motion that I seconded for another review, I wanted the department, and I was hoping the department would be looking at ways that, and make recommendations to this council, as to how we could expand the scope of use of Quimby funds. Now, when I say that, what the report came back with is the same-o-same-o. Now, as a council member who's been looking at Quimby funds, I happen to know that the state law doesn't say a mile and a half from the track. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct.
The state law says two and a half miles.
No, the state, I may be, I may not be accurate on this, but the state law that I've looked at does not specify a number of miles.
So it was a council action that basically set a policy of a mile and a half from the track. I just want us to understand that.
I don't know if that's a council policy.
The previous testimony has said that that was a council policy. I'm just trying to renew some history here.
And has been for in the neighborhood of 30 years, as I understand it. That's what we wanted to know.
Yeah, and see, when I'm saying that, it's like now, 30 years later, the need for open space and creation of parks and so forth is tremendous, because there's an imbalance that's been created by the system, at least in our city. Now, Senator Quimby, when he introduced this law, his intentions were not to create this imbalance. And what you need to know is that previous occasions, he was willing to come down and testify on our behalf as to why we should be trying to change the law. Now, none of these recommendations that are before us, because it's saying, receive and file it, and stay with what you currently have, is basically trying to change what we currently have to create a greater balance as to how we distribute these funds, and how it is that we can try and create a greater balance of open space and recreational facilities throughout our city. You know, and what's really sad is where our children live and where there aren't facilities versus where we have the funding to improve facilities. So I wanted to hold this item because I thought the intent of the motion was not to tell us what we already have and what we want to protect, but rather to, at least I was expecting, a recommendation that said, try and change state law, including your legislative package, some kind of activities to see how it is that we could modify the state law to give the city of Las Edge more flexibility to deal with the issue of imbalance of Quimby funds. Now, I'm sharing that because as we're developing all these capital improvement projects through assessment districts and so forth, what we need to know is that 10 years from now, this problem of basically being able to maintain those facilities is going to be compressed, I mean, can have a compression effect that's going to be even more greater.
This is Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks to Mr. Hernandez for those statements. I would ask that this be referred back to Arts, Health and Humanities, because when it was there, we were told by the department that nothing could be done. And I'd like this back in Arts, Health and Humanities at the next meeting with the department telling us how it can be done and what must be done in order to enable that, not that it can't be done.
If I could just make one comment, there is a requirement, this is an exaction fee, and there is a requirement that there be a nexus between the fee and the use of the fee, and the people who pay this fee are entitled to the benefit of the improvements. Now, I don't know how that weighs in with the mile and a half. It may be possible to do something about that.
I'll explain it to you. Go on, Mrs. Walters.
And it may, right, there may be something that can be done about the mile and a half, but there will always need to be that nexus between the payment of the fee and the benefit received by those who paid the fee.
Well, I want it back, and I expect that that information and ways that we can make that nexus legally to be brought to a committed by you and by the department.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to do that.
Let me, we are going to refer it back to committee. Let me just add before we do that, that I think that those of us who are fortunate enough to live in or represent park-rich areas will tell you that part of the strain on those parks is caused by the fact that there are insufficient parklands or recreational spaces available elsewhere, and so people from neighborhoods that are park-poor are forced to travel great distances. and so people from neighborhoods that are park poor are forced to travel great distances. And I was reminded again recently by the gentleman from my district who started the AYSO chapter, league, whatever it's called in South LA, that there's only one park where over 500 kids can play soccer, and they have a real problem. So they are forced then either to take their kids long distances to parks that are already quite heavily used, or not play. So I don't think the nexus is really going to be so much of a problem, and certainly the lesson of even just this discussion right now, is that if it's a city policy, and it's 30 years old, it's the council's, within the council's ability to revise that policy. So we will refer this to.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Did you want to?
I would just add a couple of comments to that, and that is that we'd like, we will get the planning department involved in this as well, because it relates back to the city's general plan definition of neighborhood serving and community serving, which is where the mile and a half comes from. I would also point out currently.
That would be very helpful to involve them.
Based on, based on my experience with this in other locations, that the mile and a half is a pretty commonly used standard currently in other cities.
Yeah, but none of them are as big as we are.
Absolutely, and I understand what you're saying, and we will come back with some suggestions of ways in which the law might be changed to better serve the needs of this community.
Thank you. I don't think it's the law we're talking about changing here, I think it's just the city policy, that's what you just told us.
The city, the city policy as it relates to the plan and the use of Quimby funds.
Right, we want to uphold the law, but we want to use our discretion to do it as wisely as possible.
Absolutely, and to the extent that we may not be able to satisfy all of the needs within modifications to city policy, I understood Mrs. Walters to be suggesting, and Councilmember Hernandez as well, that we might need to look at and address the law, which is why I mentioned that, the underlying law.
I agree with you, I understood that as well. All right, thank you very much, and that will be referred back to Arts, Health and Humanities, which brings us to the next item.
Item number 36.
Mr. Hernandez, this is your district, item number 36, and this is the question we had asked, ah, here she is.
Madam President.
Ms. Misakowski.
There has been some consultation with members of the planning committee and the city attorney on this matter, it does involve a recordation of a parcel map, and it does involve an issue of whether or not there was a dispute or compliance with the condition between the planning department and the city council, which ultimately is the one under state law to record the map. I'm going to move one day continuance, have this matter come back on Tuesday with the concurrence of Mr. Hernandez, with the understanding, and I think with the indication, that we want the parcel map person, and this happens to be a Home Depot site, to be aware that the city has an authority to accept a recordation or not. A non-recordation of a parcel map means the whole thing is dead, and that the issue over the dispute on the condition in question is something that they should work out, consult with the council member, because there was an earlier requirement that is very clear that they were supposed to do something, and we don't, we may, as the city council, determine that they did not comply with it, and not record the parcel map, which I think would not be in their interest, so this is intending to ask them to come to the council member.
And have we agreed who's going to notify them that they have this problem?
Well, my, my office will be notifying them, but also, it's important that we have the planning department here in case there isn't compliance, because I think that before we as a council can take an action, one way or another, we have to have some written findings as to the non-compliance in regards to that Q condition, and so.
So is a one-day continuance sufficient for that?
It's a one-day continuance for that purpose, yes, exactly.
Well, yes it is, yes, today's.
And the planner who's been working on this issue now is not available today, is not here, and.
But a one-day continuance is effectively a two-day continuance, because our next meeting is Tuesday.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so we'll continue item 36 until Tuesday.
Thank you.
And we're ready to go to the next item. 36 is continued one day.
Okay. Now, on the regular agenda are items number 37 through 39, which are closed session items, so now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Yeah, we'll have public comment first, then, all right. Forthwith on, which one? On 18, thank you. All right, this is the time for public comment from members of the audience on items not on today's agenda, and we'll begin with Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members of council, vote no on Proposition 22, Super Tuesday, March 7. That's a little more than a week from now. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker is M. Lawrence Dickerson.
I'm kind of talking about Los Angeles, and the fact that the city is not just up for sale, and I'm talking about a lot of fiascos that we've discovered in city services, whether it be the school district, or whether it be in each of your council manic districts. So I'd kind of like to address the entire council, and ask for its consideration, even though I'm going to use an example that is in actually the 15th Council manic district. My first question is, do you guys have the ability to access an internet site and put it up on the screen here? Can you do that from here? Because I did FTP some of these pictures up to the site.
No, I don't believe we can.
Okay, no problem. I have pictures, could they be passed, one on each side? Basically, what you're looking at is a street, and these were taken, the pictures were taken on February 2nd, that was early AM on a following in LA rainstorm. The street was just resurfaced between 103rd and 112th Street, it's right next to the Blue Line tracks on the east side. The street's in an area that most people call Watts. Now, if you look at those pictures, you see that the water that is now collecting right under the Overpass Bridge that the little kids use going back and forth to school from Markham, is, is, the sidewalk is underwater. Now, this is the next day after, this is the day after. So what I'm saying is that somehow or another, with, with, with these people who are working for the city, just putting in a new street, we have a serious drainage problem. When it's raining, the kids have to scurry across the street, then before they cross the lake and go up the street, it's kind of ridiculous. So I'm suggesting, and I know it's probably not going to be politically correct, but all the people who worked on this project, from the top down, never be allowed to work for the city again. The little guy holding the flag doesn't get, doesn't get a job with the city again. The contractor, the head honcho at the very top, doesn't get a job with the city again. What's that going to create? That's going to create a watchdog system that goes from top to bottom, that assures the people of the City of Los Angeles that when a job is done, or contracted out, or done by the city, that it's going to be done right. Now, if you can't go that far, you could at least give individuals, top to bottom, a strike, or something, and when they get three strikes, they don't work for the city anymore. What you're looking at on those pictures is ridiculous. On the back, there's a website, you can visit that website, and you can see a little bit more. I'd like to leave those pictures with the council, and basically for consideration of all council members, something has to be done to assure the people that when a job is done, it's done properly. I know this happens more than just my community, it just happens to be, in this particular case, in the 15th Council Managed District in Watts. Just resurfaced, the whole nine yards, the big thing comes out, they dig everything up, they do the whole nine yards, they put the stuff down, and now you got a lake, you got a lake, next to the Overpass Bridge. What's up? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dickerson. That closes the public comment period, and let's, yeah, let's do the closed session items. All right, we're going to, the council's going to adjourn to closed session for the rest of the meeting, basically, except for the finale, and so if you're not involved in the closed session, I need to ask you to leave the chamber. We appreciate your cooperation, and we need the staff for three closed. And let me start with, by asking us to adjourn in memory of Eleanor Hiddleman, whom some of you may know from her League of Women Voters activities. She was a 60-year resident of Los Angeles, a good part of that time, I believe, in Playa Del Rey, very gifted oral historian, and very active in a number of causes that will take all afternoon to enumerate. She's been very involved both in the community and in larger policy issues, she's survived by her husband, Dr. Joseph Hiddleman, and three generations of family. Anybody else? Ms. Misakowski.
Yes, Madam President, I would like to have the council adjourn in the member, memory of Agrippino Ajka J. and his wife, Ermelinda Lopez. These were the two people who suffocated yesterday when they, in their apartment in Van Nuys, when the temperatures dipped into the 30s, had brought their barbecue heater, on which they just cooked their dinner, into their bedroom. They had working heating vents, a working heater in the apartment, but no heating vents in the bedroom, so they took this little heater and put it at their foot of their bed, and they ended up dying as a consequence. They had done this before, they just immigrated to this country seven months ago from Central America, they had done it in where they lived, but there, in the adobe-style open homes, not enclosed, they didn't suffer this consequence. So it's a very tragic situation, and there is, I think, an appropriate time to warn people again not to use any kind of barbecuing stoves or ovens indoors, don't heat up vehicles in a closed garage, and things like that, that we'd like to try to help pass out, but I think we also would like the council to adjourn in their memory. They are survived by their 19-year-old son, Boris Mauricio Sutuj, and I think Ermelinda's sister, Enrica Hernandez of Van Nuys.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Holden.
Go ahead, then, I'll come back.
I'd like to be a second on that as well.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Holden.
I think maybe we should be reminded of the fact that Senator Ken Matty, former California State Senator, passed away, and we should adjourn his memory, he was quite an exceptional person. We all love Ken Matty. When I was there, he was in the Assembly side, but he later was elected to the Senate side, and I must tell you, I can't think of any member, whether it be Assembly side or the Senate side, who didn't feel that Ken Matty was a friend, that you could count on, or who kept his word, notwithstanding the fact that what the party line was, on both sides of the aisle, Kenny Matty was loved and respected. In fact, there were demos that said, if Kenny ran statewide, there's no doubt about it, he would get as many Democrats voting for him as Republicans, and that's the way they felt about him. So certainly, his spirit should be with us forever.
Okay, thank you, call the roll. We are adjourned, have a good weekend, everybody.